Let's see how bad I did.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session today where we are with Raul, who took down the APL series Zodiac Main Event. So, big field, 1,700 players, and we're gonna check it out today. Thanks a lot for sharing your hands. Thanks for being with us. Let's get started.
Yeah, you're welcome. I can't, I may not be able to join all the way like I have to.
Oh, I know, I know. Don't worry. We're happy to be able to look at the hands.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You just criticize me. It's fine.
That's what we do.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
For show purpose.
Oh, this is, this is, this is later, right?
Uh, this is the first hand?
Oh, really?
I believe it's the first time. Yeah. Maybe you missed it. Maybe you weren't around. I don't know. I think that's a call. But, you know, pre-flop.
That could be fun. I know I was starting up other tournaments, so I might have missed it.
Yeah.
Or I just might have skipped it because I was doing something else.
This is how we win tournaments?
Yeah, easy. Just fold, just fold everything.
It's actually.
I mean, your chip stack's going down really fast.
Go back. Now go, go back. Louis, to the king eight. This one. Isn't this a call?
The three bet? Three bet? I don't think so.
Oh, no, no, no. I missed that one. Look, flip, post, too fast.
I'm just curious how we go from like almost 70 bigs to 25. We haven't.
Yeah, it's going really fast. I'm, that's why I thought it was not the first hand, because I remember being short a lot, a lot, like.
Alright, so I guess we ship?
We could possibly let's call that because we have two VM stacks behind us.
I guess it's a fold, but it's kind of.
Yes, it is a fold.
Yeah, that's a fold.
In my book, it is.
Yeah.
This is a weird spot.
I think this is a call.
It is. Uh, yeah, could be.
I call. Thank.
Button cover, I'm folding. Your versus under the gun one, right? I'm just gonna fold.
Yeah, there's a seat missing, though.
Yes, logic.
All hijack, low jack, UTG one.
Yep.
Or UTG two, whatever. Still, like, roy position. I'm just gonna fold.
So, what are we? 25 or 30?
25.
More than. Versus under the gun one.
If he hit an ace, we kind of got his stack off, and he's just gonna have way, he has so many better aces than us when that happens. I don't, I don't like it. We're not suited.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, we are suited. I'm sorry. He said, dude, I thought it was, he said off. My eyes are.
No, no, I think it's a call. I don't know. I don't remember what the, if the blinds were extra aggressive or not. I don't know.
Yeah, suited.
Maybe, maybe you have a readies in it. Who knows?
Yeah, I don't know.
Hmm, just a fold?
Yeah.
Oh, raise? Yeah. Oh, goodness. Really?
Yeah, again, like, have to be really disciplined all the time.
Yeah, it's a fold.
Yeah, of course, it's a fold.
Your patience is being rewarded.
Yeah, in the end, yeah, but I didn't know that back then.
No, you're doing good.
At a folding, I also do, but then.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Ship it?
Yeah, that was still not a chip up.
Is anyone just calling aces there or just made?
And this guy cases, like, looked like way too much if I just call. Like, any decent player, every alarm bell's going off if I just call off 13.
Yeah.
People do such weird stuff.
Yeah, the thing is, the guy.
He's got, he's got so many hands that he can call, right? So.
Just min raise.
Yeah, well, I think the min raise looks worse, but I think like even if, once he hits something, I want to flop, he's got a hard time getting away. He's gonna have accuracy, let go.
That's true, but like, it's still.
Yeah.
I think it's a pure call.
A lot of aces, like.
Josh is probably pure calling, almost.
Charts are just calling?
I don't know. I think so.
I think so, yeah. Especially.
You haven't gotten any action anytime you've jammed yet. Maybe it's time to get frisky.
There he goes.
Oh, no. Too much action, too much action.
This is such a close one. I mean, if this guy didn't call, what should we do here? Is this a rumble hand?
If you do, I would open fold.
20? It would depend, it would depend on the player, probably.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, what's up?
Hi, welcome. I don't think that's even an opener.
Small blind?
It's an open, I think. You probably open mixing ace eight is probably.
Jack under the gun.
Cut off hijack, low jack.
Small blind. Small blind all in. So, we're gonna have like a response at chip EV and small blind all in. Under the gun one. Okay, alright. So, at EV. Just if we're heads up here, this would be a fold, surprisingly.
Yeah, this was. It's also, it's also under the gun, too.
Yeah. Oh, is it?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be.
Jack, little jack.
It's the bottom of your range. Have like eight, that's still gonna fall, but ace eight's gonna be in there. It's probably mixing ace eight, and that's gonna fall, too. I mean, that's the.
I was, I was thinking I'm gonna get a lot of credit because I don't play any hands yet. But I didn't. Or I did, and he just had.
He just had a good out.
I mean, exactly, so.
It was, it was, it's a good open in that position. You, you weren't stretching.
I think so.
Yeah. You just. You just again.
To be on the fence.
How do you have 100 bigs? Did you re-buy? I think we're missing, I feel like we're missing hands, like your stack.
I am not there anymore, like, I'm on the other seat, probably.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah, yeah.
Jumping seats on.
When you open from the bottom of your range, at least you know that.
Oh, this is it. This is it. This is a, this is a tricky one.
Oh, I think it's a good.
How many binds? 13's probably in there.
Yeah.
Close.
That's what I, that's what I figured.
Okay, seems like we're not, I, I thought we'd have a more of a, like, kind of one-way strategy, but it's mixing here. So, it's in range, not too crazy.
Nope, it's also nice.
It's, it's Louis approved.
Yeah.
Mine should call.
If it's.
In the chart, that's a three bet, though, not a, not a shove, right?
No, that's a min raise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, min raise fold, but you know, it's like one.
That's based on.
Um, just call?
A fold.
Is it a fold?
I think so.
Why? I'm, I think I'm folding here.
I would fold.
One here.
I don't remember what I do, but I think I'm folding.
It's close.
Did you want?
Think ten definitely falls, King Jack, yeah, it's fold, too. Pretty bad.
Oh, so I'm making a mistake here.
We're really short, too.
Probably make a mistake here. So, I need to call with King Queen, not King Jack.
I think that's true.
Yeah, because, because there was a queen on the flop, not a jack.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, this, these, these hands are just frustrating. Let's go. Do it. I'll take it. Oh, and, oh.
When you open, you get action on one of them.
Yeah, exactly. I was thinking I'd get the ace now, so now, now I don't think I have a monster automatically, so if I do it again.
It's nice to win the tournament, but you could have shaved three hours off of your life.
Yeah, exactly.
Better action.
It, it could have been over already, like.
Just gonna wreck here, right? This is all in.
Yeah, all in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 100%, 100%.
Ooh.
King green.
Min raise, min, oh, oh, no, I'm just jamming.
I mean, this, this might jam. I mean, it's 15.
Yeah, I'm jamming.
16.
Ooh, blocking Kings, Queens, Ace.
I mean, you're kind of late position. It might still open, like, all your position, I need.
I'm blocking so many good hands, man. I'm blocking so many good hands.
I think it's a good jack. What you do from all your position?
Uh, it's doing it. Whatever, it's good.
Pure jams at 15, all those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is.
Ken?
I was keeping King Queen suited.
Yeah.
Almost never call.
Oh, because you block all the good hands.
Oh, there was an open in front of us?
Yeah, yeah, it was a 2.5 open.
He's going so fast, I don't see everything. I thought he was opening.
No.
I will slow down, I guess.
Uh, yeah, we could be on another tournament already. It's going so fast. Oh, got them in the big blind now.
All in?
Damn.
I guess we get called. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Did we not get called?
Yeah.
I think, I think we got called.
We did.
Oh, my goodness. What is going on?
Are we? That's easy win. I think he has eights.
Eights? Hopefully, oh, five.
Five, so.
Five. He calls a five. Seems a bad call.
Yeah, I get, no, no, I think it's fine.
I, I think he just need.
Well, you've been pretty tight, so I don't know. 100 hands, you've been tight. Well, no, not really. You've been jamming a lot.
Good.
I've been having hands a lot, too.
Yeah.
We've also been at like seven different tables, too.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, it's an open size, so.
I think like he opens two, he has to call, what, 13 behind? It's a call, right?
I think he, I think he opens 2.5.
Yeah. He opens, if he opens two, then I can just fold five.
I think I don't, if he opens 2.5, I think it's marginal to just jam threes, like, because you know you're getting called.
Yeah. Okay.
So, jacks is easy.
Yeah, but he's behind us so much of the.
Well, this, this, okay.
This is a tough one.
We're getting called by.
I, 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 I thought the undergun, I remember this, and the undergun player was playing a lot of hands, and I didn't think that just call was, didn't mean anything. He was like a, a fun player. So, I didn't give him a monster automatically, so.
So, what's your strategy?
How do we call?
Calling?
No, I, no, I just, I just rip it.
Yeah, concept. I mean, do we typically rip versus under the gun for 20 something here with eights? I don't know.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
That's how I look at it. I look at it like I'm playing versus under the gun, and I can, I'm getting set mine odds. I don't know. It might be a rip. I don't know.
No, no, but I think, I think, I, I think the player matters. He was, that guy was just opening like two out of three hands.
Under the gun?
Uh, in every position, doesn't matter.
If you threw under the gun gap. Out of three, then it doesn't matter that you're jumping against.
Right, so, as you, either way, it's fine. You can raise. You could three bet to 5.9 big lines here, it says.
So, there's no calling range?
Not against, but.
No calling range at all for this spot. You want to either go all in or three bet.
And the problem, the problem is that you're not deep enough to set mine or anything, so you're just playing mostly horrible boards for your pocket eights.
There's one other thing. If we, if we do just a raise here, because of the extra player, a raise should be at least to eight. That's a third of our stack, so it's a shove.
Nope.
No.
Just like 5.9 big.
With, with, no, that's, that's heads up, Louis.
No, it's not.
No, no, you just.
Strategy. I have multi-weight charts here.
Oh, okay.
Because, because indeed, the stacks are not deep. You're just, you're.
So, that's. Let, let, let's see, let's see if you, if, if you open, if you open, like, if you make it 5.9, does the guy with nine big blinds have a chance to reopen the pot?
I'm pretty sure he does.
Yeah, but then, after that, you can only call, right? So, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Perfect board, like.
Ooh.
Not just limp, limp, limp called King 10.
Oh, my goodness. Uh, that good old APL, right? Okay, yeah, this is good. We just saw.
Yeah, get them back.
Yeah, shipping against the same guy.
Of course.
Still.
It looks like it. I love that.
Exactly. Just chip it, do right, the hand after. He folds.
Yeah.
Yep, a 13.
Oh.
Yeah, just don't place suited connectors this shallow.
Nope.
But it rips.
Yeah, it's fine. Great, good flop.
Ooh. Yeah, he was. So dead.
Yeah, but it wasn't the bad flop for him either. Once you already showed the result, there's no suspense anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know that you win each flop, flipper.
This is an open.
But then. I didn't win each.
And.
I mean, but we only got 15.
Big step, yes. Uh, now I don't know.
I'd probably put two in there.
I, I guess, I guess people, I think I, people just play really bad against min opens versus, uh, versus short stacks.
Then there's this.
Ship it. Notice this. Yeah, just.
And then this.
No action, no action.
Yeah. Then. He's fine. All in. Damn, very good.
I wouldn't do it with ace king off, probably.
Oh, my god.
Just.
Five again.
That's easy. Let's see if we deviate. I don't know anymore.
Yeah.
Now, I'm confused. This might be this hand that the guy was playing a lot of hands. I don't know anymore. I know it was with eights. I know it was under the gun, or close to it.
Yeah, but he also played a lot of hands, didn't he?
Oops, I'm muting.
Yeah, oh, I think this is the King 10 guy.
Yeah, that's the King 10 guy.
Yeah, but it's, it's tough to see because it's only numbers, right?
I remember the position correctly.
Yeah.
They play a lot, guys, in the big line now.
Yeah, but that, yeah, that doesn't matter for this situation too much. It's just the amount of players behind, like.
It's a jam.
Yeah.
I don't find those.
Let's see if we do the correct thing, then.
Yeah, it's an all-in.
Whoop, whoop. Okay.
Perfect.
I'm not too, I'm not too disappointed, but up till now, like, it's, it's fine.
Yeah, no, it's really good. And like, you were talking about the industry, you said, I did nothing special. I was like.
No, it wasn't. It was like a lot of short stack play, but you still have to do that correctly, like.
Yeah, but then it's been 100 hands, like, you're playing pretty well, and like, you're not doing like anything out of the, like.
No, it's a, yeah, I'm.
It's been. A big blind bet. I think I prefer one big blind bet here, but no big.
Yeah, maybe. I, I, I still don't have a correct one big blind kind of a strategy.
Here, I think. The board is super dynamic.
Ooh, size up.
Yeah, I. I think I remember just. Saying I would go for this hand anyway.
Yeah, I think the two big blinds is a good, is a good size for this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
If, if I want to go to three streets, probably, I want to go just bet, bet, bet barrel on most. Most turns and rivers.
Right.
Yeah.
Quick look.
Yeah, it's just, I don't think, I don't think you want him to float.
Uh, don't mind the extra protection, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, in theory, but I don't know.
I don't know what I need if.
I'm not sure, like, just, it just felt like more of a sizing up kind of spot.
I like it.
Thank you.
Scotty approved. We'll find out.
Well, I'll stamp it.
Oh, okay, so 80% check, and we're mixing and sizes, and then we have six, seven here.
Seven.
Also making.
I, I, I guess you're checking to check raise, probably.
Um, probably.
Yeah, I don't think it's check calling, like.
No, it is. Definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
They're raising big as well.
Yeah, I was.
Size on the, and what's its size?
All sizes with semis for the sign.
Maybe that is better, like.
So, well, it is never really using the one big blind here for this hand. It's mostly using either like the 195 or the other one, which is 450 over bet.
What was the fault at that point? So, two big blinds was close to the 195, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, that's really good.
SNS approved.
Alright, the king shows up, we bet big, calls.
I think the king is better for me, probably.
Oh, my goodness. I'd never, never expected that. You double barrel on a king? It is definitely better for you. I mean, the.
Yeah, try some.
Yeah, I think I have all the better kings, and he doesn't have any good kings, because otherwise he just raise.
It could get badly and everything. Wow, okay. And then, I'm surprised we get to bet again, like, size up. So, that's the right motion, man. You spot, you nailed this one.
Yeah, leaves, leaves an easy shove on the river.
Yeah.
We have redraw outs, too, which is nice.
Yeah, most likely.
If he caught, if he called in the turn as a, and the turn is not, doesn't help us, do you jam that river?
Like, what, what turn doesn't help? Yeah, like, like a club would suck, probably.
And eight, otherwise.
Five would suck.
Eight, no, but a, 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 a jack through aces is just me betting, probably.
A deuce or another, a deuce or another king.
Straight draw, which I blocked.
That's a pure. Jenga.
These are for the turns?
Yeah, see, so, but there's, there's not a lot of really bad ones.
How is a four not good when it gives us a straight? I mean, it's okay, but it should be like the best card for us.
No, I, I think, I think board bearing is the worst if it's not the seven.
Oh, I thought you were looking at the seven, six hands, though.
Yeah, I said, yeah. Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Oh, so, yeah, four gives us a straight, right?
Yeah, see, that's small to keep a man.
On your hands, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not, it should be bright red, I would think, in this. Oh, okay.
Alright, so this is our strategy with six, seven. We, seems like we're going wild on every turn unless it's a spade or a six, where we pick up like marginal, like, a weak hand, basically.
Yeah, the six gives him a straight. What's the, what's the river strategy, though? That's what I was asking about.
Uh, call, and then put a deuce. On that deuce, we bet. Small.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, basically, we block bet.
Yeah, we block bet, and then let's look at different rivers.
Probably the thing we're most worried about is a spade coming in there.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, what he calls a big bet on the flop and turn, like.
Turn high cards, a bit more.
Yeah, seven or higher, non-spade, we're likely to be shoving a lot, but not the eights.
Wow, okay.
Five is the worst card in the deck.
Yeah, I.
I can't lie, I kind of enjoyed it. I had that correctly.
Yeah.
It's just a weird spot, like.
Yeah, you nail it.
Uh, so. Yeah, but I, it's, it's, it's a feel, it, it was a feeling at the time, like.
Mm-hmm.
Feeling that this is correct, but. It's nice to know that it is.
Yeah, I'm sure I would misplay that. I'm sure I would check that river.
I could have easily misplayed that, like.
Good.
Getting awkward. Uh, I guess fold because it's, it's spades a lot.
Yeah, this spot's gonna be under bluff, right?
Yeah, I think it's an under bluff spot, so spades a lot. Let's fold.
Or just an ace?
Yep.
Either way.
I fold.
I like folding.
I hate folding.
Everybody hates folding. Like, this is also so, this is so fucked.
What are you doing?
Yeah, exactly. This is just close my eyes, go for it, probably.
Yeah.
Wow, oh, any fold. Ridiculous.
Free bet folding from this tag that that's.
I sometimes see that, I think.
Huh?
Uh, Asians, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least they have bluffs.
Oh, my god.
Well, don't have bluffs, huh?
Yeah, but if, if they don't have bluffs, you, you, you kind of have to fold because, because.
I know.
Kings and aces, like, it's ridiculous.
All in?
It's the king. Yeah, probably. It's the King 10 guy again.
Chipping up.
Yeah, my stack now.
Yeah, it just feels like 100 big blinds deep now.
Yeah, you get.
Yeah. 15, button cut off hijack, low jack under the gun one, so 15, can look at under the gun or low.
Yeah, maybe this, maybe this with this, with the amount of shoving stacks, probably.
I like betting here with the heart.
Oh, it's easy bet.
Have you consciously?
The king is also good for your range, it's a good board for your range.
I might even double barrel on most, on most turns.
Did you consciously change your opening size to 2.1 from two? Or is it just? Okay, and that's because you have.
It's depending on stack size, like.
Right.
I only, I, I only change on stack size.
Right, I'm saying that's because you have, you have 30, although the rest of them still are at the two. The rest of the field is still at the, the smaller size.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, okay, but it, I think it matters more when they, when you're in late position, you kind of have to call off, then you size up a little bit, so you give yourself good odds, but otherwise, I'm comfortable folding, folding to 15, 16 big blinds. If I have a bad hand with, if I open 2.1 or two, or two, it doesn't really matter to me. I don't think.
Well, what do you?
Might matter, I don't know.
When do you change? So, I mean, obviously, you don't do 2.1 all the time, but when do you go from 2.5 to 2.1 or 2, 2.0? Or what, what, what stack sizes do you try to change at?
Normally, at 20 big blinds and below, I'm in, I, I'm in that everything. Uh, like, average stack size, it's 2.1, and if it's earlier in the tournament, or we're all deep, then it's 2.3 to 2.8 sometimes. Depending on how deep we are, and if it's, if it's a bounty tournament in the beginning, and you're all 300 big blinds deep, I just, I think I just open three X a lot.
Okay.
So, this chart is from like modern poker theory. You want to probably have a quick look, and, uh, yeah.
Okay, but I think, I think that's, I think that's effective stacks, right? So, if I do it, uh, based on my own stack alone, then that probably isn't correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, at this table, the.
So, here I should be min opening then.
But honestly, there's lots of data that says like, pre, whatever pre-flop mistake you do, if you don't do big mistakes, false flop, like, the EV is minimal.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, if you go from two, 2.0 to 2.1, it doesn't matter a lot.
Yeah, doesn't matter at all.
I just wondered.
Go from two to three.
Let's pretend I make a lot of post-flop mistakes, so then I should be going to two.
I doubt you, that's the case. That's the thing.
Yeah, but.
You put a lot of pressure.
It's very hard, it's, it's very hard to not make a lot of post-flop mistakes.
I agree.
Yeah.
Ah, so you can double barrel here with the ace ten off, that's fine.
But I wonder what this.
Size, the size, you know, you could size up here.
Yeah, I think so.
That's what I see. Uh, it's mostly picking, going for the bigger size.
So I I'm just curious, what is he supposed to do on the flop, the villain with the nine? Is he just calling or is he just supposed to go broke with his um low shirt, with his low stack?
I think he's just, I that's my thinking was he's just going broke.
He's just calling down, I guess, so we're not gonna be able to put pressure on his weaker pairs by barrel.
No. For sure, but we get a seven to fold, I think.
Yeah, that was my my goal. If he has a king, he's calling anyway.
Like a seven is folding that turn, definitely, if we bet big.
Nines are falling also. Starting to get sevens to fold, okay.
Well, if we get a seven to fold with the name, sorry, it's amazing.
Some nines are folding also.
Yeah, but then it it. The sizing should be different.
Well, you're just beating all his draws.
A little bit bigger, you know, because you wanna try, you're we're trying to get a seven to fold, basically. Oh, now the seven's not gonna fold. Alright, just.
Yep.
Oh, I'm not sure about this one. What do you guys think? Is this an open? Yeah.
I think it mixed.
I fold.
Yeah, it's bottom of range, but that's okay.
I know.
It's an easy fold if he gets three bet.
Okay, so under the gun.
Yeah.
And then we're under the gun one, it's mixing. Not too crazy.
This is this is under the gun one. With the seat missing.
So now you can call it off.
Yeah, a big blind to small, that's maybe okay now.
Just 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 get there in the fun way.
Yes.
Get there the fun way.
Dollar.
Run the river.
Sometimes you gotta take the dog out for a run run.
Diving all all off.
Five was also good.
Can can the guy just open eight high and you just told, no?
Rip it.
Easy rip. Oh, beautiful. Oh, no.
Are we even thinking about calling with that king ten suited there?
No.
No.
Okay.
Little too big.
I have way too many bad players in this tournament to just to just call off a king.
And also way too many ace X, you're beyond.
Yeah, yeah, so if you guys don't know, this game runs on Gigi Poker, it's called the APL, it's Asian Poker League, I think. They don't run it all the time, but when they do, it's pretty crazy because uh there's a lot of Asian players that don't usually play often that play all kinds of games in these, so they, yeah, it's very, very entertaining to play.
I I I think this stack preservation is really important here.
This is the same Burcham, this is the site Burcham plays on. No, this is Gigi Poker.
We can't fold this.
Uh, nope.
What's the buy?
It's around sixty bucks.
Yeah, sixty-two dollars, I think. Hmm, just go.
That's bad here. I think we called once.
Yeah.
But then. Under the gun one.
What about check raising? I don't think we get to check raise on a board like this because we don't have all the all the better hands here.
Yeah. Maybe we need some back, other back.
This is this this board is way too good for for under the gun range, so that we don't get the three bet here, I don't think.
Also, this answer doesn't want to uh.
Can we fly? That's the that's my number one question.
Let's say we defend threes here, I don't think we we need, we we, I don't think we just, I think we just call threes on the flop. We're not raising those. Hey.
Now with such a disconnected board, I think you're gonna find creative bluffs that center around the wheel here, where you have the aces and overcard and the backdoor straight as the wheel on the flop. I think that's where you're gonna get your bluffs from.
Yeah.
Rather than the backdoor Broadway, why is the backdoor wheel more valuable than backdoor Broadway?
As you don't block the hands that you want him to fold, like king high or like queen high and jack high.
Mixing.
Do you jump check raising?
Yeah, like you see ace, deuce and ace four there.
Five.
Yeah, all of those with the backdoor flush, backdoor wheel and an overcard are gonna be your creative bluffs here.
Right, but the offsuit ones don't do it.
No, the offsuit ones aren't. They don't have enough equity with they without the backdoor flush.
Right, and so it's only, right, okay, so the offsuit is the Broadway blow, is the Broadway blood.
Yeah, and those don't, those don't block his auto with gut shots that he's betting on that pop.
Alright, so we would go with every nine, every three, we would raise with most kings. Where are our bluffs? Ace side backdoor flush? Okay, so these are our bluffs here. So these ace side hand that have a backdoor flush, and then when we raise big here.
I wonder what ice jack is actually doing. Value.
I think it's very clear, these are gonna get better a size to fold, maybe.
Yeah.
And and it's also gonna get the gut shots, queen, jack and stuff like that to fold too.
Yeah, what would be the reason to to raise ace jack there then?
No, ace jack's just.
Between Anthony, it's not a.
So it's mixing. What would be the rea- reason to raise here?
Because.
And what suit does it hate? Let's go back to that ace jack. Ace jack offsuit.
Nice to have like the ace of club in its hand.
I think it's raising kind of as a value bluff in a way because it gets like potentially deuces to eights or something like that to fold. And still dominates hands like queen, jack that they're gonna call, that would be my guess.
Man, it's found that we get under pairs to fold.
It's green office folding, and potentially even some sevens and eights are folding.
Yeah, and it hates having the jack of clubs, it doesn't mind having the ace of clubs, but it hates the jack of clubs. Which is, I couldn't, I can't figure, I couldn't figure out.
Well, uh, Ken was telling me about, sometimes it doesn't, it likes to unblock the high card, the suit of the high card, if you unblock the suit of the high card, you go a little bit more crazy. So we started to notice that, maybe that's the thing here, because like the ace of spade, which is the same suit as the high card, it's folding a lot. When we don't block the suit of the high card, we're going for it a little bit more.
That's not true on this one, Louis, look, the 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 ace of spades is not, i- i- is.
The suit of the high card, we play it less. If we don't block suit.
I think that's not true, but look at it, I don't think that's, I don't think that's true, what we don't, what we.
Yeah, there's some weird mixing going on.
Yeah, that's it's, it it's fine logic, it just isn't what the what it's doing.
Yeah, so at least like we know that if we raise a hand with like ace jack, we get some ace queen to fold, maybe some under pairs. So that's the motion anyhow, it's mixing, if you think your opponent is not ring betting like a lot here on this texture, you could probably just flop fold. Um, but it's mixing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think he's betting, I I I think he's betting a lot on this board, but I still folded.
Yeah, all the commas have folds in them.
This one doesn't, not here.
Oh, good.
Kind of tournament is this?
The one you watch me, watch me win.
Ooh. Yeah.
Don't spoil it for the.
I remember uh seeing someone playing this.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness, what is he doing? I like it. You like it? Oh, my god.
Look at all, look at all the short stacks and the four point six, seven big lines.
Ooh. This is spicy, I like it.
Maybe you can reach it behind him.
That's really good.
Queen.
Didn't didn't work out, didn't work out for now, but.
It's a low flop, so it cares.
Should we definitely, yeah, right, we should.
Oh, yeah.
Alpha.
I think I prefer betting smaller.
Yeah, we talk about small.
Probably.
Like three?
And with the queen of spades, I'm kind of happy to check also. Because the button is so short.
Okay, yeah.
Hmm. Oh. Oh, boy. Just a call, it feels so bad to call here.
I think uh only options are call and jam.
Yeah, but do you know with two dead hands like this, do you would you jam ace queen?
I stand.
I think you could call here, planning to call off a jam for many of the short stacks, but fold if the original razor comes in. Wow. Right, because there's three short stacks behind you.
Around the hijack first, under gun one.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I'm not folding to the short stacks, but.
Yeah. If the short stack goes in the original razor calls, I think you can.
Okay, this is your call here.
Your call, yeah.
Alright.
Hmm.
I like a check, check or check all, or just a call, probably, yeah.
Yeah, the queen's not bad for your.
I'm gonna probably bet.
Yeah, the queen's not bad for your flatting range, so.
That's true.
I can get behind the small bet. But a checks also.
I I do not remember what I did here.
I most of the time bet smaller.
Yeah.
I mean, I imagine he has worse aces that'll float and um some kings will start falling. King X.
But checking back is not that that hard, I think.
No, I think might be a mistake, but I would tend to bet here a lot, I think.
One reason.
This is not a bo- board where you get a lot of folds instantly, probably.
And then we can just bet small here and we usually get to see the turn for free as well, we could decide what we wanna do. On turn, we pick up some equity, we can barrel. He's not gonna fold pairs, like he's not folding sevens, eights, nines.
Betting small has the advantage that we can get to the river with just a small bet.
Yeah, that's true.
Unless he play, unless he plays like us with uh the that the way he defends on paired boards is by check rating.
He sure does. So what's the advantage of betting a hand like ace jack? You have floats from.
Falling hands, it it's just cleaning up equity, I think, you got the best hand a lot.
More pairs are getting in trouble.
This is kind of a wide range that the solver is giving the guy opening.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's under the gun, he's not opening jack, seven, ten, seven, nine, seven.
Yeah. I don't have uh the sim, what I have is hijack versus cut off, so it's like a bit more like both one one bit to the left, so it's not the exact range, but it gives us a wild idea of what to do. Okay, betting or checking, probably fine. Now we just.
You show them ten plus one.
My zone seems fine. Great.
Those are very nice indeed, those kind of balls.
Um. Yeah, he's he's, yeah, but he's folding a lot, so.
Okay.
During the tournament, I was raising the big blind a lot, so.
Yeah, I'm a bit scared towards this end.
Might be able to hear you, so be careful. Anyway, have fun, Andrea.
Thank you, sir. I'll talk to you later, Q.
See you. Bye.
Bye.
What's up, Andrea?
Too late, probably.
Um. Alright.
I don't think this is really interesting, this is just an all in.
It's three uh big blinds.
Oh, okay, 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 I didn't see it, Mark. Alright, let's go. Starting to get chips here.
Have to win your all ins to win tournaments.
That was ace jack off versus a six suited or versus a six off.
A six off.
Alright. This, really?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, the button is gonna be shoving a lot of cards other than ace.
Okay.
Take lines on the button, he's gonna be shoving all the queens, all the tens.
Yeah, it's gonna be shoving his jack as well. All the queens, all the tens, not good here.
Yeah, that's a decent decent run out, so. My bad.
Yeah, but I like it. Think it's too short, he's shoving every worst ace six, king eyes, queen eyes, as you guys said.
Hey, I learned from my mistake.
I don't think shoving that ace six is a mistake, I think that's a great play.
No, no, I was I was referring to my min opening now into two shorters.
Hmm.
With the queens?
Yeah.
I liked it.
Yeah. I didn't size up anymore.
We have a folding ranger.
If we do, then this probably is right.
I call ten four off, I'd rather probably, I just fall probably, you know, it's a click.
Yeah, it depends on the player.
It's a bottom of range, I I think it's okay to fold.
I think we are just not supposed to see the min open anyways, so it's hard to.
Oh, my. Yeah, that's the thing, like, you're not supposed to do two X, it's annoying.
Oh, yeah, so.
I'd rather have a little something slightly better to bluff with and just raise, but I don't wanna raise with that either. It's so short.
Versus versus this stack you can't raise, like.
I guess it's a fine call.
Yeah, it's great. It's probably, it probably.
But like, 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 I think so, I'm playing in position and it it's just, you you get such insane odds.
What do you do with ten two?
I just feel like when I call.
Again, I wasn't happy with calling, I was happy when I called. There's a big difference, like.
Yeah, so you just call here? Oh, I don't think you should do it there. SPR is so small.
I would just call, I mean.
Usually this SPR, well, why do you raise?
I would just expect him to have a lot of Broadway combos anyway. Okay, just didn't expect him to fold anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then uh you're even less incentivized to waste because you're raising in such a strong range and it's harder for you to bluff and if you waste with this deck size, I think you could just make it three and a half big night, but I think you shouldn't really waste.
Yeah, you wanna like at this SPR, your very strong hands are just never folding, never raising, just call the man down.
Makes sense.
Right. I mean, you're never folding that hand, no matter what the board runs out, so you can always just stuff it on the river.
Yeah, it's so easy to get stacks in with so small stacks. Doesn't really matter.
There might be some runouts, like four liners where we.
King, king.
They, no, not at this type, nevermind.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, what is this here? We have a calling ranger.
I I have, I have no idea what I what I do in the moon, but I would imagine that I was just jabbing.
I would probably just fold this.
Folding.
I think I think this is later stage of the tournament, I think we're we're close to getting to the final table.
Uh, two hundred on four hundred.
Oh, no, yeah, maybe the final table took long, I don't know.
Maybe we're approaching the money.
Yeah, I, uh, but but it's so. And there's not a lot of people at this table that's normally.
Yeah.
You might even, you might even be in the money already.
I mean, it should be, they just jam, right, like.
Okay.
Louis, that wasn't an ICM chart, right? That was just the regular.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
Um. Why do you check her?
Deception. But I don't think that's good because I think I should be betting this board a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's pretty much a range bet.
You have even weak guy kings, so it's hard to make a decision.
This is one of your worst when you're deep stacked, so.
And you can just chip behind sometimes, like.
I I don't do this like every time, I just, I I think I just uh.
Cause king four and king five.
I I don't know what the.
We can give value right away, we're not blocking a lot of his floats, so. We can give value right away. We're not blocking a lot of his floats, so I mean.
King four and king five have, have better chances to make a straight, so I think king six and king seven are your worst checks or your worst kings here.
Betting almost all kings.
Yeah.
Seems, it seems right.
King four is the, king four checks the most.
Yeah.
Yeah, some offsets also. Block three, I guess. Some of his flow.
Smaller, probably.
Yay.
Just. Random happiness. This is, this is a weird one, like, I think I can just fold probably.
Yeah. I mean.
So what do we do with this one with seven, eight suited with nine eight?
Maybe it's better to raise than to call.
I think it's a three bet.
I'm mostly calling. I think we're. Maybe a bit too short to miss three bets.
I would only fall because of the five big blinds and the small blind.
Is, is, is the small blind not a problem here? Like.
That's the only reason why I fold is the small blind just kind of probably get it in a lot. Now I'm like, I just wasted chips.
You shouldn't if two players are already committing money.
I don't know what happened before.
Foot go all in a lot.
Forty bigs, it's a call.
Especially if we are calling something like that.
But I know it's, I know it's.
Are folding too much after.
I, I, I know it's a call, but I, I think the small blind makes it a little different.
Yeah. Don't have any three bets as well here.
Now, but again, the small blind makes it, makes a different, different.
He gets a call from at least one person, that's why he has to have something.
And I'm not sure if I want to fold the flop there. Because people see it too much out of position. Especially cut off against big.
It went so fast, I don't even know what the flop was now.
Where they're supposed to check it ton.
No, I think I have to call here.
Yeah, me, they're calling or raising.
Two back, two back doors, no overcard?
One is a fat bet back enough.
Raising is pretty effective because you get so many folds and put any pair below jacks in the tough spot already. Same as with overcuts.
Should lead the lot, I think, on this.
And then the, the plan is that you barrel if you get any more equity to try to get those.
I, I can't lead on the button, right? So very hard to lead on the button.
And you will see that the cutoff is supposed to check a ton, which the fact that he's seabed is already an argument against it.
He's, I, I've just looked at somewhere spy, he uses a large bed size often on jack high, ten high and checks back petition amount.
Yeah, but you see, uh, the cutoff is supposed to check ninety percent.
Right, but that's a, that, that board is much better for six, seven than two, three. The two, the five directly interacts with the six, seven, and the two, three is much further away.
Yeah, still you don't do a lot of betting, I mean.
Yeah, look at that jack.
I think the jack five deuce is more representative because it doesn't have a flush draw.
And you got a flush draw on this board as well.
It's the same.
Yeah, we need the back, we'll have the back, give us the backdoor flush draw. We'll look at the jack, we'll look at the six.
And so it's calling pure because he has no bets here. And our range is very, very like condensed here.
And if you node lock him to, um, seabed fifty percent or something for this sizing, you're gonna go crazy on the button.
Yeah.
And he's bluffing a lot.
Oopsie.
Um, you can send, uh, I don't know, copy paste the ranges or something.
I probably got this exact hand in my database. It's cutoff versus button.
Yeah.
Let me look real fast. Forty bigs, right?
You're looking at forty or?
Yeah, because Ken has run a, a spot with like only Broadway board, uh, only rainbow boards and he's been training like that spot for like infinite time.
Jack.
Jack reduce.
Yeah. And then just find that way a lot faster.
Jack three deuce at forty bigs.
Okay, so. It's jack, three, two, okay, I got it.
All right. You're gonna run it and then node lock?
It's already run.
Okay.
I know, I got basically the same thing you got, though. It's ninety, check at ninety-five percent, so.
Yeah.
You want to say it?
Yeah. Share the screen.
And now what do you want to say?
We want to see our response for the six, seven.
So he bet, what did he bet?
He bet small.
Uh, I want you to click on root.
Click on what?
Root.
Root.
And now then click on analysis. On the top. Now, oh no, it's not this one. What, where is it?
You want to node lock?
Yes. So click yes.
Just gonna take, uh, this could take like seven, eight minutes, I think. It's gonna rerun the.
I don't know if you know it's a.
It's gonna be very fast.
Yeah. We can also come back, we can come back to it. Since we folded.
What did he bet? What's size?
It shouldn't be very long. There we go. Uh, now you want to. Okay, so it has all and selected. Oh, shoot.
Something like that.
And just a second.
And so what we're doing is we're assuming that the opponent is not playing G T O here because they bet, so we're, we're giving them a default strategy where they're betting.
A lot of people are seeing.
So you crank up the bet small to the max. And select it as well. And then remove the selection on checked. And then crank up the bet small to the max.
So you're assuming he's, you're, we're assuming he range bets.
Yeah.
Although we think he's gonna check half the time.
They have to, uh, I think.
Good. Now click on luck. And then save and close. Now go back to, to the first screen. Postlop rebuilding. And now, uh, build tree and go. Now we're gonna solve it down to zero point three.
I'm running scripts too, so it might take a little, it's gonna take probably like fifteen minutes.
Or that long.
I'm running scripts in the background.
It shouldn't be very, very long. You should, can you stop the other scripts? Just stop it.
I'm almost through this one. I'm not gonna stop this one. It's almost done.
And we can just do some more hands while.
Yeah.
All right.
Nice.
Is this not a bigger bet type of spot? Or can we just bet kind of, oh, well, he bets kind of big, so it's fine.
Yeah, it's big because the guy's short stack too, right?
Yeah. Terrible. Ah, so look at that chart. I'm pretty sure we're supposed to call here and in reality, I think this is always a fold.
Then there's that.
Yeah. How we're supposed to call?
God, I did run your hand, by the way.
Thank you. Well, yeah, we'll look at it at the break. Thank you.
I didn't save it, but I have screenshots. I think you wanted another river, I guess, after.
No, it's the turn. The turn matters. No, I was folding the river.
Uh, you were supposed to bet the river.
Oh, Jesus.
I was betting sizing. He's betting sizing. Yeah, I don't like. On the river. What do you think, guys? Hello?
Hello.
I took screenshots on, I sent them to L P.
I, I, I kind of want to know why. So this is a clear call. Now it goes check, check. Now I don't think he has that much normally.
I think I would size up here.
Yeah, okay. I was thinking about it in spot and I just thought I was just gonna try to get called by. Weak kings and queens.
I have a question on that hand there because I struggle with something which is when, when he bets the turn. And you get to the river and all of a sudden the obvious draw comes in and you have it.
You lead.
You just lead out and go, I dare you, you know. I dare you to think I'm bluffing this time.
Yeah, he's gonna check back almost anything.
That's what I thought. It's like you just have to bet and you just have to turn your hand face up and say. Sometimes I bluff here.
Yeah, we're, we're leaving money on the table if we just check because most of the times he takes market job views that we have, uh, at the.
So, yeah, so my experience is, is I often bluff there and it always works. And so when I have it, I, I think, well, he's just gonna fall with my bluffs always work.
So now check versus everybody else and just do the same thing against us because we know now.
Yeah.
And if we can still balance our checking range by checking some really strong flushes.
What?
Yeah, you also, because you have the ten of the suits, it's less likely to get called thin. Because that might call with a ten here.
No, but I, I, I thought like. Yeah, I, I thought like his, uh, after he checks the turn back, like. That caps him a lot.
He just never has a king there.
Yeah, but he does in, in, in real life, but I, I thought he might, might just have something like ace ten or something like that and there's just hit a bear and just check back or jacks or queens. Trying to get called by that.
Yeah. Like he, like he could have had, you know, a, a, a queen ten type of hand himself, but.
Yeah, something like that.
But if he hits the ten, he's gonna call seven, but because you block that ten, maybe it's a chance to go for a bigger bet here.
Yeah, maybe.
OP, I don't know what you made me do, but he's checking flop a lot still. I think we got the new strategy just when we node locked it.
No, you need to run it again.
You need to run it, but the question is if you were building three again.
Well, it's checking.
I, I think, I, I think the check mark turned off. I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
Yeah, we had the bar, but the bar, but it wasn't, but we didn't check it. That's true.
Exactly. So maybe that makes a difference.
I've run it in G T O plus if only one check raise size. So raising almost forty percent of the time and calling, uh, the rest, no folding.
With the queens, with the six, seven?
Uh, six, seven is.
And did you, did you not like the, the flop seabed?
Yeah, no, locked, uh. Hundred percent seabed.
Okay. All right. So interestingly enough, on this turn, we can bet.
And if you don't have any of the shoots, then, uh, you raise more.
What, he wants to lead here?
Yeah. Pretty weird, right?
You can.
We can if we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, but it doesn't have my hand anymore because it raises flop.
Uh, no, it's mixing on the flop. So here you have like queen ten of spades.
Yeah. But it's. Oh, it's, it's different because I, I was looking at the greens and the clubs, but it.
Yeah, I know. Spade there and we, we can lead here pretty, pretty weird. But we don't check, check and then.
But it, it seems, it seems weird to lead there.
Yeah. Yeah, bigger size, that's what I thought.
Definitely some straights.
Like usually after the turn goes check, check. My best top pairs, I'm gonna bet big. My weaker top pairs, I'm gonna bet small. All my big value hands, I'm gonna size up and like this is one of them. So wants to go all in here.
And, and probably your, your, your bluff, you're also gonna size up then.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Like pocket five here. Uh, hands like.
Yeah, of course, but that's.
Eight queen off.
Never getting anything to fold, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so bigger size would happen, cool care.
Right.
He does have a king. He checked, he checked.
Yeah, but I, I doubt he's, if, if I just, if I just, uh, bet close to both sides, he probably folds.
What do we think about his check on the turn?
Oh, what the hell is this end?
Like, king, king, jack is too strong.
Yeah, it's very bad.
Right? I think he, I think he, that's the bet again, right? The double flush draw.
Yeah, he needs to bet again for sure, small.
There was a lot more draws coming in with the ten, I mean.
Yeah, it wasn't gonna help him, but.
No, no, because I'm, oh, if he bets small, I'm calling again.
Oh, yeah, you're calling him.
Yeah, but like. He, he should have let you know that he had a king by betting twice.
Yeah, he should have lost more money.
Betting big on the turn.
So that river.
Ouch. How did we get, how did we see the flop?
Well, he limped.
He limped.
And we hit second pair.
Yep.
He bets.
We call.
We're never folding second pair here, but when we raise, we clear up a lot of equity with hands like ten, because I think queen ten here is in hell of a trouble.
Yeah.
He has a hand like a king ten, like there's plenty of stuff here to have.
And I would imagine, I would imagine I raise here, right? So just.
Yeah.
Sort of.
Versus the six big blinds, yeah.
Yeah, I like the ration, dude.
Yeah.
And what does he have? What did he limp with?
Queen ten. So annoying, but it is what it is.
Yeah. It's fine.
I'll, I'll always hate those, like those hands where you couldn't have done anything different because he limped. I wouldn't be in the hand otherwise.
Okay, I guess we call.
Interesting to note that a guy with the eight big blinds limped queen ten under the gun.
Yep.
Yeah, at this stage of the tournament.
Hashtag fish tag.
Hey, I've got a stack now.
A limping fish.
Yep.
Philimps just blossom.
Need to call. Check. Now people don't really double barrel enough. We don't block any of the draws.
But he's bet small though.
Yeah, he's betting small. We don't black heart, we don't black diamonds. Call again.
So in my sim seven, six, mostly.
Oh, no, no.
Range.
No, it just goes check, check probably.
Your sim says what?
Mostly folds when he bets range.
If you bet range, I have no faults if you bet range. Zero.
I have a great bluff catcher.
It's fifty-seven percent fold, thirty-one percent call and ten percent. Raise thirty percent.
What?
Uh, backdoor flush folds. I'm sorry, I looked the wrong one. Backdoor folds forty-four percent.
Okay.
Oh, wait, which, what flop do I have here? It's a rainbow, yeah, backdoor flush, so.
Check, check.
I'm in spade hearts, yeah.
Well, thank you. Do you consider?
This is why you don't, you don't small bet on the turn, like.
Yeah, so.
What is he trying to accomplish? Like if I had a flush draw, even if I have six, seven, I'm probably still calling. Yeah, six, seven, definitely.
Could be a draw himself, you don't know.
I think I know.
Yeah, exactly. That, that was, that was what I was thinking, like that, that's most likely what he has, like. Either a pair between an eight and a king or, or, or a draw himself.
I think I know what he's trying to do here. He's trying to buy the river for three point two seven rather than checking and having to call your, your sizable river bluff into his bet the flop.
Yeah, sure.
Turn motion.
Sure, but.
Which is perfect for you.
Exactly.
But I think that's, I think that's what his goal is with that small bet.
I think, I think it's, I think it's the wrong hand to do it with, though.
Yeah, don't accomplish anything.
Like, like if, if he buys a small river, uh, a cheap river, but the river hits me, it just makes me a pair when I was on a draw. And he just, he just gets beat.
Yeah.
At that point too, so.
Can, can we make a point for a folding three, uh? Pre-flop with two jamming stacks?
No.
Yeah.
No.
So what, what happens if he makes something like fifteen, when he just calls your three point seven right here? Do you have to fold or what do you do? What's your thought process there?
On, on what streets?
On turn?
If, if, if he makes it what?
Like fifteen?
Oh.
Fifty big blinds, that's just double, do, do, double pot. Um, I think I just fold just because I don't need to take this spot. I can. Pick better spots.
Yeah.
What if you have like jack, six of har- or diamonds there? Are you calling?
No.
Uh, no, I'm just folding.
Okay.
I say, I say good hand and.
Yeah, because people don't go to a spot like as they should.
What if he bet, what if he just bet, what if he just sized up? On the turn, with the normal size up, like six big, like it's.
That it, that it makes my, makes my life more difficult.
I don't think we can fold with clubs. We don't block either flush draw, so I think we still gotta deal.
That makes it an easier, easier call when he, when he does anything half pot or below.
Yeah.
And, and, and otherwise, yeah, it makes my life more difficult, but I probably have to call.
Okay, that was a question.
And this line is just so random.
Yeah, with this particular hand, he has to. Size up, right?
Don't think this is good.
From the small. I agree.
Only.
Also, the sizing is, the sizing is super problematic.
I think this is just to give up five.
Yeah, it's a fold pre-flop.
If anything, just jam if you think.
Yeah.
Yeah. The honesty.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, three suited, I think is a jam there, but five, three off, I think is a fold.
So like the, your only league we've seen after two hundred hands, blind versus blind from the small blind. You're a little bit too. Your range construction needs work.
Yeah. Heard that before.
Blind versus blind is the hardest.
They may do that.
That's good.
Kind of leaning towards checking the send on the flop.
Uh, whenever button versus big blind, when there's a nace on board, usually at every stack there, we are range betting.
On the button, yeah, I don't know.
From the button, usually. This one is, is gonna be the one I wanna check the most, but I don't think we have any checks on this texture.
I think we have, let's see.
Probably do, like, it's like twenty percent check, eighty percent bet, but in my mind, eighty percent is just like.
And king queen is just the hand that.
Yeah, it is the end, I was gonna check, right?
But in your minds, like eighty percent is just range betting, like.
Yeah.
And fifty percent betting is just eighty percent.
Make it ace, nine, six.
That might be a problem.
Yeah, it might, right?
Uh, Louis, make it ace, nine, six, uh, because if you have ace ten on their, their support weight war and. On any ace high, you bet on average ninety percent of the time, more than ninety, ninety.
Okay, okay, I'm a noob. Yeah, this is like.
You've got it exactly correct. It's, it's king, it's king queen off. I see it.
I wanna check the move.
Small sliver.
Yeah.
The sliver is king queen.
Yeah, but that's the, I think, uh, just solve a bit further and then it's, uh.
This is the first line of my book. Whenever there's a nace on board, button versus big nine, the button is range betting.
When can we see your book? I want to learn it also.
Oh, my God, it's gonna take five years.
And you can range bet.
Is, is it just as a book of, also as an audio book? Because I don't want that.
Louis, and we can also.
Imagine if I read it with my sweet.
Sweet. Exactly, yeah, I don't want that.
Go back to Sim, I wanna see the size of that king, of, of the range bet, because I thought we could range bet large.
Always small.
Oh, no, no, it's small, mostly.
Okay.
But it's not really small always. You wanna size up or value straightforward, like top pair, best top pairs, you bet big diamonds.
Interesting that jacks and ten one, hmm, jacks and tens want to bet large.
Above the nine.
Yeah.
It's like protection.
Draw, sir.
I don't know, I never do that. I'm just range betting small.
Alright, just bet small. Then maybe it makes more sense to just range bet half pot.
What, what happened on the turn?
It's not, yeah. He dunked bet half pot.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hate that motion.
That makes it easy, like.
Yeah. And the turn he leads, we just fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because the three hit him like, like crazy.
Check call, love, lead turn, savage, right?
I hate that.
On a rainbow three, yeah.
I think I would. On the turn here.
Never, never does that.
Good.
Yeah. I think I would just fold if I had kings, because if, when people dunk bet, when they're not, or when people play in aggressive line, when they're not supposed to. You can generally weight them towards most win.
Yeah.
Sometimes, of course, they're bluffing, but. Generally, generally. I click back or I fold.
He's gonna show you seventy-three of clubs there or something.
Have a colder. Yeah.
I don't think clicking back would be a good strategy.
No, I don't think so either.
If your goal is to light chips on fire, then it's probably, probably perfect.
They smell when they burn, huh? That's, I don't like that smell.
No.
The clay ones are.
Noss likes to burn chips a lot.
It just burned money, yeah, that's good.
Chips and money. Both.
Only money.
I don't think this is right. I'm afraid.
They have all what you do.
Are we doing sizings or do we, do we do the betting in general?
I think we need a backdoor flush here to bet.
As a backdoor straight.
And like against the big blind, when it's one of these, like the eight is a little bit neutral, but it's really close to his key card, so it's like, yeah.
It's fifty big blast deep, huh?
Think like we're checking like forty percent here and we're betting sixty percent. And then when we bet, we want to be able to pick up equity. So we're bluffing, like this is a zero equity bluff basically, so I don't know, but we're looking up, I think it's.
I like it, to be honest.
Okay.
I was, I was thinking I'm getting so many folds, like, like he's missed so much here.
Yeah, I think people are not playing aggressively enough and with five, six of spades, you block actually. Quite a few value hands with, uh. Eight, five and eight, six suited probably also eight, six offsuit. And people are gonna overfold with hands that dominate you like king, six, uh, even with a backdoor flush draw potentially.
You, you're just gonna get a lot of folds here, because the guy who only has fifteen blinds, he's gonna play very honest. He's not gonna check raise you with three to a straight, three to a flush, so. Not often.
I don't mind it indeed, but I think, uh, GTO wise. I don't know if it's correct.
I, uh.
Just don't know.
This is definitely a handed bottom of range with no showdown value, right? So.
Where is that?
Uh. Yeah, you can have no active blush in possession, indeed, that's true.
The five, six is slightly better on eight.
That's what I learned from, uh, GTO, uh.
So we would range better, alright.
Just bet everything.
We'd also don't.
Don't have six, five. We don't have.
We're not supposed to open six into four sub twenty big, s- sub twenty stacks.
But now that we're here, we're range betting, so range bet.
Yeah, but if they know you're open to white, they can, uh. Blast on you.
They don't even need to blast on you, just need to click it back on you if you're open to white. To make in raise, you fold everything.
The only hand you check there is quad eights.
Three eights probably too. Yeah, they were just over folding.
Strong.
I think I like that.
Nice.
Most, sometimes you're in the, in the, in, in the mood for just playing aggressive. If everything's working.
Oh, king five, that's spicy.
King five, I'm not sure, but if it was king six or king seven, I think that would be amazing.
Yeah, king five's also gonna be below his opening range. King five's gonna be okay, right? Cause he's gonna be off, he's gonna be suited sixes.
There's a lot of calling with those hands.
Uh-oh.
Right.
Uh, and for, for, for twenty-five, even lesser.
Thirty big blinds.
What are you looking at? What are you looking thirty, right?
Thirty.
Yeah, the twenty-five cells are not doing it.
A little spicy here.
And if the big blind jams, you have to call.
Why, yeah.
Yuck.
That's why I don't like doing that.
Exactly. It's the guy that's. On your little, nice little score, man. It's pretty nice. I made fun of you like three days ago and then you turn back and you get two, two thousand something. Pretty cool.
Almost, I almost had a deep run last night too. It was.
Sweet, my man.
K up top. It hurts.
How much?
Last night it was fourteen K up top, it hurts.
Ooh. Okay, roll. You're on a man on a mission right now. What is wrong with you? Is this the bubble?
I think there's a bubble of the funnel table or something. I don't know anymore.
What is going on? The guy has seventeen big blinds.
Spicy.
Whose game is this?
This is Rose's game.
I think. We bet, I would prefer jam, but.
Killing it.
Uh. Or five. For, for calling on the button. Heat moves and flop.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. There's only one SPR left.
It has to be the bubble.
If it's the bubble, you should bet smaller. How do we fold S five?
I don't know what's going on, seriously. We play jack nine, we fold ace five. That was more role.
And now he's raising off a twelve big blinds.
Yeah, and after he folded the last hand, it kind of looks strong. It's, uh, on top of the, uh, ways that looks strong already, so.
I think this is a feel kind of situation, like, like I'm not doing this again.
Alright.
So if you, if you had, if you had folded the jack nine, you'd call, you'd raise the ace five here.
Yeah, but then he still had seventeen big blinds.
Yeah, wait, yeah, and the ace five's a good raise there, right?
Yeah. Better than the jack nine.
Yeah.
At least block, uh, some, uh, calling and sleep.
Ace five has magical property.
And if you were to raise with ace five here, what kind of size would you go for?
First that's, for, for that stack size.
Yeah.
I have to.
I don't think it, it matters too much because if you're gonna have to call off anyway.
Yeah, I think it's a rip if we decide to raise, that's what I'm saying.
I guess.
Oh, with the twenty big blinds behind, yeah, okay, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, there's no big blind, there's no big stack behind.
I would prefer not to do that.
Uh, which you, you would not do that.
Four, four guys behind you, there's too good a chance someone wakes up with a hand.
Yeah.
If you're on the button, maybe you get away with that, but.
Someone, like, two people.
Someone might wake up with pocket kings.
And someone else might have pocket nines to face you.
Hmm. For Chippy V, uh, you do it sometimes.
Alright. Okay, thank you, sir. Limb, that's fine.
Limb strategy.
The devil is a spot where I would bet one.
But it's small, right?
Interaction with the straight here.
He limped, so he has a good hand, probably. Yeah, but we can't bet always.
Oh, this is fun, yeah, okay. I remember.
Oh, my goodness.
So, so with the, do you lead on that ace?
Oh, my.
Yeah, maybe we might. We have more aces than him, huh?
Yeah, because we limped and.
That's why I raise here.
Yeah. And we also called the flop, so we have some amount of ace, X and.
Yeah.
Yes, hero.
I mean, everyone's wide, so we have lots of straights too.
Just looks weak when he bets the small size on an ace, which we have kind of. Sometimes.
I was, I was kinda happy with this hand.
I also find that we can eat, uh, need to raise that. Sometimes. I like it.
Uh, yeah, I like it.
I think that, uh.
I was thinking of leading, but the check raise is even better.
High frequency check and big bits.
Alright, so.
And after the check, do we ever raise? Because that's what we did.
That's small. Jack four is calling for the flop. Right now. So we call, we get the turn and nace.
On knowledge.
We check. Uh, he's supposed to bet a lot on the nace. He's supposed to size up, is he sizing up?
Not habit.
Oh, he's small.
It's a small bet. Hands like. Do we have a river?
Yeah, four is doing it sometime, nine, four, so fours are doing it sometimes, so. I don't mind it.
Oh, so it's nine, four with the flush draw. Is it?
Yeah, and nine, four with the.
Nine is magical.
Straight draw.
Okay, yeah, with the eight, that's right.
But also queen four off is doing it sometimes, and, uh, jack four off. It's not that crazy, I mean.
Deck four doesn't do it at all, though.
Jack four office doing it sometimes.
Or jack four.
We're looking at the suit, it's only.
It's probably the blocker indeed.
So you know what? If you have the upper dangler instead of the bottom dangler, that would be fine. Like jack eight here.
Yeah, because eight, eight is a straight draw to the nuts.
Upper part of the straight, you have a great raise. So like you, you have the bottom part of the straight, so the general idea is here, straight interaction and this type of hand.
But I think, I think the motion is fine, and especially against like the population. When they do a small bet here, they, I think they're just trying to get to a showdown with like a weak, weakish pair. I, I think this is fine. Even though, even though Pyle says no, but.
Yeah.
On the way with it.
Look out that you don't overdo it, indeed, if they notice, then. But I like it indeed.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if he has like a strong two pairs, like a bet small there, so.
Most of the time, no, no, he wants value from an ace.
No, like almost never.
Yeah, solver's not doing it, I'm getting small.
No, but I, I don't think we should, should assume they play like solver.
Yeah, but most of the time means that to the.
And what, 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 what game is this? It's just like a big buy and a small buy.
This is, check this out, son.
Sixty-two dollar buy.
This is APL and GG poker.
Oh, wow, oh, yeah, this is like almost, this is over ten K, this is seventy-eight thousand yen, uh, uh, the Chinese, right? Yeah.[1758.42] That's a nice little score, man.
I remember because I spent it all, like.
Oh man, already?
No, I'm kidding.
Went to strip club, huh?
Rolls. Shit, I could have, shit, I could have done that.
When, when was the last time you hit the strip club, roll?
There's, it like, I don't live in the, in the part of the islands where there's a lot of strip clubs.
You have to visit.
We, we have, we have, we have a bunch of coffee shops here, though, but we have them everywhere.
Surround the corner.
Exactly.
Got him.
But it's been a while, sure.
On the river too. Just, just in the, just to make it hurt.
On the absolute, they have it also.
Uh, this sucks.
Sucks, yeah, you're almost priced in.
Tricky spot, right? Should we even open this lose? I'm gonna have a Jack low jack. So Jack thirty effective.
Uh, if we're, it's, it's out of range, but if we're bluff, if we're blasting the table.
If you have risk premium, maybe we, we can, I think. Because we have the big stack.
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
And then calling it off for five more bigs, it seems fine as well.
Yeah.
You're saying the flop is not fine.
You.
But it's okay.
Your tournament guys and your ranges.
Yeah, Scott is different than, uh.
I know.
Yeah, I came from cash games, huh?
Yep. Although you can raise, I, I, I actually should have known that because you can raise Queen Jack for two point five big blinds in the low jack.
Oh, yes.
Kind of an important hand, probably.
Oh, yeah.
Got him.
Faded the world on the river.
Oh, yes. That's when you. That's how you win when you run good.
Yeah, that's how you win tournaments, probably.
Ooh.
This is exactly what happened to me last night, like I just got pipped twice and I'm out. And I'm sure.
So the opposite happened to you last night.
Yeah.
Is this an open? Are you getting carried away with all these chips flowing?
Oh, I just think there's a guy with nine big blinds.
Yeah, running so good, just straight, so I'm king seven.
I kind of do. I kind of do the same thing when you're, when you're the tip later and you're close to the, the final table, don't you just wanna be bullying?
That is the final table.
Oh, even at the final table, you wanna bully as much as you can?
Yeah.
I, I can't imagine this is too bad.
Oh, King seven's fine.
Yeah, one tip off.
That's fine, I mean. That's absolutely fine.
I even do it, not on the final table, I mean.
Well, it's not the final table, probably, because there's another guy just jumped in.
Uh, sometimes I let them switch tables.
Did he just check back and then that turn? Yeah.
Yeah, it seems fine. I think you're not doing too much wrong with betting because. Get some protection. Damning nuts. People usually don't protect their checking wrench enough. True. Failure bet and check. Yeah, it's nothing.
No, this is the final table, right?
Yep.
Definitely. Alright, final table.
But EG just some, something weird, like the blinds go down before the final table, so you have a.
I know, the blinds go down.
You get more big blinds. That's some weird, weird thing, because like.
Yeah, that's, that's a weird thing on DG, right? Cause last time I made it to the final table with forty and all of a sudden I had like over a hundred bigs, I'm like, what is this?
And that's, and that's cool and all, but the other guys get more blinds too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to know that, that's very, uh, final, uh, gets five big blinds on the final table.
But look, look back one hand, look, look how, how shallow everybody is. And now we're eighty big blinds deep again. I remember a lot of folding in the beginning with the final table. And that is why.
Yeah, that's just a fold.
Yeah.
Hmm, ICM, guess we fold?
Just fold.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. ICM, any, any other situation, we just fold.
Just don't, don't, don't play a pot against the big stack out of position. Stay away from that.
I don't think we can, like we have to play some blinds, probably.
Yeah, but not with those.
No, 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 this is just, this is just shit end.
Yeah. Ooh, market.
Yeah. Queen nine, wow.
He's the shortest stack, right?
Yeah, yeah, but still, like.
But hey, congratulations, you moved on.
Goodness, what are they doing? Old four bed jam, wow.
Well, big stack is opening too much, another big stack, three beds.
Ooh.
Here we go.
Ooh, good check here. How do you check here? I would bet really, really often here as the three better and a three bet bottom this texture, but you're against.
But I think, I think in ICM, the motion is correct, cause you don't wanna, you know, cause he covers you, you don't want you, run your equity against a combo draw. If he like happened to check raise you, this sucks when you bet.
That was actually what I was thinking.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely perfect.
You waste a bad card and then you bet, I mean.
Yeah, like, yeah, cause now it's fine.
But now, but, but, yeah, I, I'm, I'm checking most rivers now.
Yeah, we can't get all in. The, the point is not to get all in against another stack that covers you.
Okay, maybe there's like merit in checking the club at ICM.
That's how. More inclined to bet with King of Clubs there, Louie?
That's how Bert, uh, Bert Steven plays. He would check back top pair against a big blind that covers him, cause he doesn't wanna run the equity.
Yeah, I saw that also, uh, he does that a lot to me, uh.
Yeah, it's actually pretty smart, cause, I mean, you just wanna steal a little bit from the big stack and then just bully the middle stacks.
Also, the big stack is more likely to bluff into you.
So he's. Plus, I thought, I thought he could, he could, with the stack sizes we have, like he could, he could have sets on that board easily.
Yeah.
And I think we had two, three bet a bit bigger, uh, we could have.
Three, yeah.
I, I think, I think I'm getting raised a decent amount because he, if he has flush draws or, uh, like he can put a lot of pressure on me, so I, I just.
Yeah.
Played a little cautiously.
Yeah.
Yeah, your hand is also strong enough that it's not worried about a queen or a jack or a ten turning on that board?
Yeah, but once he checks twice, now I think I can bet and get some, 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 one pair of hands to call.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah, but it feels kind of weird. I prefer checking again on the turn.
I think both is fine.
If you have.
I hate.
Then I'm more happy betting just because you have additional equity.
Okay, I was just thinking, I don't wanna let him run four clubs on the board for free.
Yep.
I know, I was there.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. I thought this was an open discussion.
Great, great card.
Once I have a reply, yeah, I was there, like, I can say that. I was, I was playing it, I know.
Oh, you guys both make this final table?
No, he was just sweating me.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Like.
Uh, what size did you ask? Two point four, I'm calling.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, no, he covers, no.
I wasn't there.
I'm out of there.
Oh, did this guy double? Did this guy cover us before?
He covers us by like close to double, man.
No, I know, I meant, did he be, before? That's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't know.
I, I, I didn't, he must have doubled up while we were, while I wasn't looking.
Then we, you're calling, calling patient. Yeah, it was a two point four raise and not a three point two, that's the difference.
Yeah. Oh my goodness.
No, we still want to get out.
Folding, uh, against the bigger stacks.
Did I get that correctly? Like, just folding.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even with this size?
You see what Bert Steven folded when he gets three bet, he folded Ace Jack suited, man. He's like, I'm out of there. He's in mid.
Position against another stack that covers me, I'm out, get me out of there. Yeah, but I'm, I'm not folding a hand to commit the nuts, but.
Yeah, but I mean, he won the million dollars, so.
Yeah, sure, yeah, but like.
Not, not a bad way to go.
He, he's probably better than me, though, so then I'm, I'm just saying I'm not doing it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yay.
Put pressure on him.
I like how he plays, is very simple and nice.
Out of the big stack, right?
And if you cover the guy, bet, bet a hundred percent and then bet a hundred percent on the turn.
Oh, nice.
We checked, we, we delayed that C bet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we checked some, some, some better flush draws behind, probably.
I think we raise here.
I guess we do. And we don't?
Um, thirty big blind, big blind, small blind call.
Isn't it the suited ones?
Yeah, my strategy here is gonna be like all the, the garbage from the big blinds, trying to squeeze a little bit, but we're just trying to get folds with these type of things. And the suited stuff, we mostly just realize equity, so I would raise.
Probably better.
So you, you, Louie, you take those fifty fifties and you push them all to hundreds?
Yeah, this area here for sure, because people, when they live, they don't really have like, uh, a, a good defense of their limping range from the small one.
The more, the more, uh, interesting question is, all those zero percents, do you push them to fifties?
Uh, no.
I try not. Okay, okay. Yeah, okay.
It's, I, I could, but.
I'm just thinking, if I would have to draw a degenerate, then I would draw you.
Thank you, man.
Alright, we got a three, we're about to chip, we're about to ladder up.
And for now, that's the only thing that matters here.
Here we go.
Always better to do it yourself, like.
Yeah.
Get some chips.
Yep, noticed the la, I noticed the lack of ISO on that one. I think so.
Yeah, but, to be fair, like with a guy with three big blinds in, then I would rather open aces because people, like the big stack behind can pressure me so much, because there's a three big blind stacked in there.
Yeah.
I normally win more, but it's, it's okay.
I hope I don't see you guys on the final table, ICM where people, man. I just wanna play with fish.
If you have the big stack, the best thing you have i- is like ICM where people, you can just.
Yeah, but how often? How often you get to the final table with a big stack? Not often?
Always, that's true. Yeah, yeah, compared to starting stacks, always.
The other day I got to the final table with like. Five big blinds and the rest of the table were like five big blinds and one guy with a huge stack.
Like, give it to people who can complain to getting to final tables with the amount of chips they have.
Yeah, but I don't mind.
It's good in poker, you don't get to final tables that often anyway.
Yep.
I guess we call.
We're going, we're going broke with these aces, right? That's the idea.
Gas.
Good.
Like, that's not, that, I don't.
That's a pretty big blind.
Yeah, I don't think that's very good.
What happened? He three bet you and then just go bang, bang, bang?
Oh, I think I, I just double barrelled and he just, he just thought on the turn, let's go with it.
And nerd on tated.
Yeah, he trapped you with top pair, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Block many draws and kind of, if he just calls, he kind of is priced in on the river anyways, there's many bad cards and.
I don't think, I, that's.
They're gonna. You can play better against him if you, uh, get to see the river for free, basically, with your hands.
But do you think they're triple barreling as a bluff often enough here for you? Like we can call flop, we can call turn, and if he bows again on the river.
Yeah, I don't like it, Jack ten, without the best jacks.
Yeah, I don't mind it if it's not on the final table, but when it's on the final table, like. I don't, like the chips that we preserve, it's very important, I feel like. Um.
Yeah, but what are you, are you done, are you then folding pre-flop, like?
For him?
Yep, because he's never folding flop, so he's then calling.
I'm never folding, I'm not, never folding flop, I'm never folding turn, but when you blast me on the river and I still have ten bigs, I might just fold, cause.
Sure.
I could still have a chance to, you know, ladder up.
But I don't think he has ten big blinds left if he just calls turn.
He does, right? You bet five, he, he jams fifteen.
Okay, okay, then I miss red.
Right?
Yeah, I don't like this play.
Yeah, I don't like it on the final table. If it's like regular, not even in the money, yeah, sure, go for it.
I think maybe what his thought process was, was what, once he saw the jack on, on the flop, he goes, I'm, I'm going with this hand, how do I get? The most out of you.
Yeah, like he has, he has top pair and under twenty blinds, like.
I believe this is never a miracle.
No. I don't like it either. In retrospect.
There's so much traffic.
Well, starting to like it a little bit more.
Oh, what about now?
Yeah.
Cause I'm still calling.
Yeah, double belly buster.
No, you're not. The nine is not.
Oh my goodness.
A double buster.
He just, he like, like he just checked it down a straight.
Yeah, really weird, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine, not supposed to go for S.
Yeah, I don't hate, uh, ace, ace, so, he's saying it's bad, but, uh, we have to call, uh, some should it base.
Think if we have a jack, we're forced to call, if we have a queen, we're forced to call, uh.
No, I mean pre-flop, but okay, yeah, yeah, sure, if we have a pair.
This is not a fold at ICM, I think.
Hmm, okay.
Ouch.
Because we invite, we invite, we invite the big blind also in and we can, anyways, yeah.
Shouldn't bluff anything, almost.
I was really happy with the, the guy that has the exact same stack as me, that he was really passive, like not doing anything.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Chips go in position here, so that's pretty.
Yeah, otherwise I had a, had a, had a shit spot on this table. No, he was just being passive.
But the one thing you worry about is, are they gonna like call too wide or something? Passive, but they might call too wide. It's also bad.
Yeah, but everybody, if, if they're passive, it's pretty easy to keep pots small, like, so.
Yeah.
It makes it.
If they're passive and they won't, uh, raise, you know.
I don't mind playing pots against him, that's, that's not a problem, but not big pots, out of position, that's, that sucks.
If you bet it, you're false, and if you doesn't bet, you can, uh, bluff him.
But he wasn't getting out of line a lot in the small blind when I opened. There's nothing.
Yeah, so I think on this texture, the button is supposed to be polarized, checking forty percent.
Yeah.
And using big, using big size, because there's two big cards for the big one.
I think, uh, at the final table, we would really need ICM solves. Doesn't make much sense to look at that with, uh, Chippibee source.
Okay.
Cause things are changing a lot.
Did I check back? Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Oh, that's annoying.
Oh.
Cause you see, because of the draws?
Yeah, probably, but if I, I would have met.
You can prefer calling, but whatever.
Do you, anyone raises to like an eight or nine?
No.
I think that's better. Nah, I wouldn't raise against a small size for sure, but.
Okay.
He's betting big here, just call here.
By sizing up, we have less raises, makes sense. Okay.
Pretty dead here.
What about jamming?
Can you have that call with?
Okay, whatever.
Act them.
I have to bear this SPR with the, we don't really risk anything, we just go away with it, right? And what?
Too bad.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yuck. Before we go much further, did we do the, did we do that six, seven suited hand?
Yeah.
That Ken ran?
Yeah. Yes, uh said it was.
Different answer.
Pure call, and then uh Ken said it was mixing.
Yeah, with mostly mixing with mostly fold. And we don't know the difference of why and we're moving on with our lives. Okay.
No, what 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 we've learned is that one of the solvers sucks, like.
Yeah, well.
Right, and by solvers, you don't mean the software.
Like, we we know that the out of position should be taken in love.
Probably not needed, software is probably good.
Our big stack, our beautiful big stack.
Yeah, it's gone now.
Now we have to play like a normal person.
What about calling here at ICM? Is this good?
I wasn't sure.
Forehanded. I think we have to.
Yeah. I don't know if it's, but I'm calling. Yeah, small stack.
Hmm.
Or medium stack, that's fine.
Close to the check on you, but King gate is uh strong.
I would call.
Yeah, called.
I'm not sure if it's a call. Might be a old pre-flop, but I'm not.
You wanna go, you wanna look?
Uh, yeah, I wish I could. I'm gonna note it and I'm gonna run it later because.
We can't put it, we we can't just throw it in HRC, okay?
Well, we could, but look at this.
What are we looking at? What you're, they.
My 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 subscription ran out one day ago.
Oh, no, okay, nevermind.
On January first.
On January?
Yeah, January first, my subscription went out on HRC.
February.
I thought you were just kidding.
No, no.
One day ago.
One day ago was different for you in Canada, then.
Yeah. No, on on February first, I mean.
Yeah, 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 okay. Otherwise, you would've been asleep for a long time.
I I will, for sure.
But not now. Now we're gonna finish it.
Okay, I like this jam a lot, but then, no, I think I prefer to jam with ace, lower ones, like ace five, ace four, ace three, ace deuce. And call more with this one, because if we jam the lower ones, we get better a size to fold. This one doesn't, uh this doesn't get any better a size to fold, right?
Yeah, but it's kind of whatever jam, I feel like. It's um. Which I shall call. If we don't jam hands like this, he can just call ace, eight offsuit easily and.
Okay.
I mean.
I don't like playing.
Is face jack not folding?
Should be calling.
I don't know about that on the final table.
Yeah, sure. With four left, like this range has changed and ICM drops a little bit. I betting here, because we're above the six.
Yeah.
Now I like shutting up, because we could be facing a jack. Terrible river. Our opponent missed a big batter. I think he can bluff here with all of his busted flush draws, all of his busted straight draws. Uh, this is a scary card that changed the board.
Exactly, so he so he most likely has a jack.
Has a duck, yeah. Or nine.
Or nine.
Okay.
That's the same, but it's.
He missed the jam pre-flop, but.
The non-union equivalent of a jack.
Oh, yeah, huh? What is he doing? Green flop? Calling.
Yeah, it's just a hundred percent jam.
Yeah.
And a hundred percent call and.
But he decided to bust one head later.
Yeah. He he was on borrowed time, but like not a lot, not a lot of borrowed time.
Oh, my goodness.
What what's?
Limb rate.
Limb rate.
Three bed sizing is so weird.
Limp raise to sixteen.
What is sixteen achieving there? Really? Their position.
Four times the 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 raid, the squeeze, it's like he's been waiting three hundred hands to limp raise like this.
Yeah.
It's not never race king. Like kings, minimum.
I I don't I don't think the the top guy thinks he has he has aces.
This guy has aces?
No, no, I don't think he thinks the other guy has aces.
No, for sure not. He should wake up and realize that when the guy limp raised to sixteen big blind with four left, I mean.
He doesn't have a bad half.
He's not folding.
Sure not. Just basis.
Always.
Why is it ever ever anything different, like?
Are you guys?
Big kings.
Are you guys folding the Jack there when he does that?
No, not against this side. You can have a face king. He made it like nine big, yes.
Yeah, I do fold the jacks, of course.
But sixty.
I think it's easy to fold.
If you ask me if he has aces now, I would say no, for sure not. And I would be very wrong. I think it's always gonna be kings or aces here.
Sure.
Yeah, this is one, one, one or two hands, like.
So you even told a king there, you think?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the the.
He's not limping a king.
The player for being that obvious and then fold.
He's not limping a king, it's uh.
No, no.
It's tragic to link, to link a king.
If you're, if you're the one that put in the four big blind, are you folding ace king when he did that? That's what I'm asking.
It's a really tough spot.
If I fold jacks, for sure I fold a king.
But ace king at least blocks aces and kings.
Yeah, exactly. I think ace king is duffer, probably. I don't know.
It's a tough spot, I think. Anyways, happy to have the good player bust and the bad player win the pot.
Yeah, he was really not that good. And you remember, you were there.
Yeah, which one?
Had a guy now now winning.
Guy with the aces, has been, he played his big stack, stack super passively up to this.
Yeah, the heads up didn't last that long, like. Also, because I think I have him. Pretty big chip lead at that point.
Uh, sometimes you only have a few good flips at to.
Yeah, exactly. Call.
Like this.
I think this is the same spot as earlier when you had three tens, that this SPR, you're not really raising.
Yeah, but against this player, I think I am.
Okay.
I like a bigger raisers. Than four point one.
I didn't even see what the size was.
I think it's not that big, I mean. Really made that too much.
Four point.
You want to open?
Four point one.
He's pricing with.
Bit bigger.
Whatever.
Doesn't have that much.
I think it's a bit weird how HM three like puts a nice pile of chips there and bug. Like, who did that? Is he still working for them? I mean.
Yeah. And now it it puts the chips behind the flop for some reason. Yeah, and then in the dumb spot again.
If on those eights, if the board, the board had one overcard to the eights, if the board had two overcard to the eights, do we still bet them? Like if it was king, if it was queen jack instead of queen four, queen jack, queen ten, queen nine?
Yeah, you have still average.
I probably do.
Okay.
It's an arrangement.
Yeah, he doesn't even have a key card.
Okay. Screw the big blind, they never have anything.
Most of the time, that's true, so you can vault against a big one.
Oh.
Oh.
It's fine.
Yeah, like that, that one big blinder like that. Raise, wanna raise back or call?
He's passive, so raise back.
I don't know. Yeah, right back, sure. Oh.
Can also call or let him bet.
Sorry, I was away for a minute.
Yeah, the way he's been playing, I prefer waiting.
Now he's getting.
Minute.
Now he's getting spicy.
Oh, what are we gonna do now? Nothing.
Upstand.
Have my.
Looks like they're straight to me.
Yeah.
I would have given him another bet.
Why are you so generous, then?
Because I'm trying to be nice. Do we ever succeed or?
At being nice?
Yeah.
Nice.
I don't think.
We bet the turn of flop.
There for this.
Can't call.
I do think we can bet. I think we can, just to hear smaller.
Smaller, yes.
With the second pair here, you don't really get to size up like this.
Uh, I think it's okay.
You think?
Rangers are so wide.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll online call, that's.
He did die, so right.
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of draws miss, right?
Can you go back? Did we bet the flop or turn?
I know, we just, we just, we just called the turn.
Now, okay, then I think it's perfectly fine.
So I, like, all draws miss.
Now, you get a true lot, that's true, but I would.
No, but I I think a nine will call, like.
Yeah, the six also. Yeah, maybe.
Sometimes. That's smaller, I think he always calls it.
Yeah, but if you think a nine will call this, but uh most of the time, I'm still with Dennis, but I think.
I have a question.
I I would probably call a nine.
Yeah, and I want to reserve a small, a smaller size for very betting a nine myself, but I think it's good enough.
I have I have a question on the.
Almost.
Redemind of this hand.
Almost never wanna call with like a third or fourth pair, start turning into bluff when you take this small side.
What? Let me go back to the, go back to the queen five, the way we hit the second pair on the on the turn. Here, so we limp. If in in this hand, so we we size up because he has aces in it, because he might have an ace. We like that, we want him to have an ace. Um.
Diamond roll.
This goes, yeah, so if this, if we start getting raised, either here or we get raised here and he blasts the river, do we ever fold two pair?
No, and we don't size up because he might have an ace. We size up because he has a ton of draws and bluff catchers and we want to get in more money before the board turns badly.
No, no, I'm 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 all for that.
Strong hands and draws and a potter.
Plus it, plus it's easy for us to have a lot of losses, too, right?
I'm not, no, I'm I'm in favor of our sizing up here. So we size up and we get raised, either shoved or just raised and then shoved on the river. Do we ever fold the two pair, giving him two better pair?
Just getting it in depending on the one or what.
If we get raised. I mean, if it's another diamond.
Very bad.
Plus, I don't really love the spot if I get raised here on the turn, like.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. If we get raised.
When I size, when I size up, I don't really love it, like, it's, yeah. He doesn't really ever have nine, five, because he, it's like, we would have heard from that by now.
Yeah, he should, yeah, so.
He could have.
So every two pair beats me.
Uh, the only hand we are really losing against is queen nine and we block that.
Yeah.
I would probably call if the river is a a bad ten, then I uh have diamond, or jack of diamonds, and I for sure fold.
Yeah. And we just never, we just never, if he if he shoves there, we just never put him on ace five, we.
Yeah, mostly better.
We just suffer through it.
Uh oh, he's starting to lose it.
I think this guy already lost it, like.
That's a pretty tight fold, but I don't hate it. And I would have open with this. Yeah, can Jack is strong. Because he also doesn't seem to be isolating enough at all.
I think we need to call here, because this person, I'm I'm under the impression he always double barrels with a mix.
I'm a bit scared because he overbet the flop.
Yeah, but does he ever check the turn with the nicks?
I don't know. He's a bit weird.
Don't tell him that, that's awful.
Okay. So you go for the fold here?
I think I might just fold the flop as an exploit against the overbet.
Oh, really? Okay, all right, because they just never do that, right?
Yeah.
We don't even need to build a strategy against it, we can.
And even if he is bluffing. Even if he is bluffing the flop, it's kind of hard to get to to showdown against the overbet.
Like that.
Lost in the way out. I hate overbets, I do myself. I like it.
Looks like we're gonna collide a little bit here.
Interesting.
What's the play here?
Shove.
All in.
Although we have position.
Position doesn't matter. Watch, but I'm a bit scared.
Yeah.
I am scared, too. He's only doing this with a tight range, like a king's aces.
He did it before, uh in the, in a similar spot when we were.
But the stacks are small, so he can.
Easy jam.
Yeah, I think so as well. Oh, my goodness.
That guy is easy jam.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, no, heart, heart.
Well, we don't even need that.
Oh, no.
We need it.
We're up against ace ten, we're up against king, queen?
We have a sweat here, roll, don't.
It might be worse. I don't know. I it 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 feels like it might be.
Worse, that's he has worse hands than uh.
Oh, my god.
Seven.
How can it go?
What, yeah, how does he three bet small pre-flop? What is going on in his head?
He just didn't.
He's at least he's three betting. He's three betting in GTO sizes, eh?
All right, he just hates money. That's that's what it is.
So so what he should have done is he should have either called, folded, or shoved there, but never, never three bet?
Fold or like, uh.
I don't, I don't like shove, I don't like shoving.
He has a big stack, he has no need to shove. Against the button open, it's always gonna be profitable to shove, so.
Yeah, that's what I meant, and and.
Yeah, that's true, but.
True, that's true.
True, that's true. I think I'll try with.
And in his.
If I'm in that spot, I'm probably not doing it.
Shoving is better than calling for sure because he's gonna get outplayed post flop a lot.
Yeah, I see him dark. This is always an all in.
Yeah, that's what it seems like. He we he can put pressure. He has ICM pressure he can put on us.
Yeah.
And then he and when he called our shove, that that was.
It's almost priced in. That's the problem.
Really?
What? What happened?
No, 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 no.
We opened.
When he when he men raises, he just needs to fold like he's not priced it at all.
Yeah, yeah, I thought he should fold it.
What happened there? We open, he three bet, and we just shove it and he calls it off?
Yeah, three bit super small, which doesn't make sense at all.
Oh, hallelujah.
Exactly.
I've never seen it happen in my tournaments.
Poker needs to be easy sometimes.
Was he getting twenty five percent? Because I mean, he.
No, poker needs to be easy all the freaking time.
That's true. Yeah, but then 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 everybody could do it and nobody would make any money.
I gave up. I gave up on playing on the harder side. Go and play where the fish are.
Why don't I check here?
Let one be blind.
Yeah.
Realize your activity.
And I bet here like weird. Here we should bet. Here we should bet.
Hmm, I like this. Whoa. If if we overbet, we put him in a tough spot.
I think he's got, he already got a great deal of chips.
Sure, sure, but.
On the uh, on that ace, queen, ace seven hand, so he bets, we have twenty, he bets, he gets to four point eight eight and we shove.
No, yeah, I make it two big blinds and then he makes four point.
Right, that's a great, yeah, that's where he does that. I'm just thinking, I'm thinking how bad his call, uh, his, his, his initial raises, we've decided is terrible.
Yeah.
But is he? Is he actually priced in? Is he getting twenty five percent? A seven versus.
Twenty five percent.
What's he getting? He's got to put in sixteen for forty.
No. Did you have nineteen something or?
We had twenty something.
We have close to twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, he 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 needs.
So he's still, so it's still a terrible, so his call is also terrible.
Whenever you're not getting two to one.
Plus, we have ICM.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, it's.
And future game, like, he just needs to keep his chip lead intact.
Yeah, yeah, it was really bad. Okay, I just I was just seeing, making sure that it was bad on on every street, on every decision.
Yeah, you needed an extra exclamation point on the bad.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, it it, yeah, I like it. I like it. I like it. Yeah. I like it more when he's actually here, like, but but. I like it. Oh, this is gonna be easy.
Hmm.
Yeah, see, that's how you do that.
He still makes it three X like, like, what the hell?
Three X full.
That one big blind.
That's terrible.
Have you opened three X? Has he been opening three X before?
He limped raised four X.
He limped raised four X with the aces.
Is that, is that ace king hand, the hand where you might want to induce? I I thought the stack sizes were just too small, that they were just gonna call decent kings and 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 any ace anyway.
Yeah. I'm good with that. Plus.
If I'm in the small lines here, I'm als- always jamming against the seven big blind, big blinds. Yeah, but you 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 want them to jam, right? So. Yeah.
Oh, not necessarily.
I think I think. Yeah, like picking up, picking up two big blinds here is not the worst. Plus, they have a lot of hands they can still call with.
Right.
Plus, you have to put something in the bank because I'm gonna do that light, light at some point too. But it all also makes your, your min raises a lot more scary too and allows you to raise wider. Yeah, I don't think this guy just actually keeps that in mind, but still. Yeah, love this.
Collision. Ninety.
The nine eight. He said, fuck it, like.
Yeah, indeed.
I'm gonna end up.
Fuck it. Fuck it. What what's four K after after seven hours of play?
What second?
Let's do it. Fuck it.
What's it on the face of that?
But once he puts in half a stack, he kinda.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Yeah. Also, what's what's the, what is that non-all in initial raise about?
Yeah, I I don't like it with that hand like.
Yeah, he really.
Some people just do it to look scary.
Because the hero can uh, jumps every.
It allows me to sometimes just call.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I have I have chips to spare and then he he has stupid flops every time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that if you go in and small blind calls, then you can fold.
Yeah, there is that. You can you can add it up with it.
Still.
Oh, that's a limp in theory, but I would prefer min raising against this guy.
Okay.
Because I don't expect enough eyesos.
That's true.
Yeah, because we're we're trying for a limp re raise here, right?
Yeah, no, against a good player, that would be pretty cool, but against him, I don't think we are gonna see enough aces at all. With good hands for sure, but the ISO waste fluffs are mostly not gonna be in there.
Jam boy, jam. Let's eight X pole jam.
He's doing.
He still have sixteen big lines. He hasn't realized.
No, no, this this is the, this is the standard thing. Somebody's calling him to dinner like. It's been up. Come down. Okay.
Was he uh, from China?
Uh, his play would suggest so.
Okay.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
No, no, but it's that this is a Chinese tournament, right? So there's a lot of crazy.
Only you can believe what they're, where the.
I don't like it because he's not aware of.
So so let's 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 call him uh, from New Zealand then.
Oh, yeah, that's true, handsome.
Those guys also have no fear.
Is this a raise?
No way. If he's not, we don't have holding uh, anything.
Uh, rugby match, those guys.
Um, that's actually really good play in heads up short stacks, like it's gonna go limp and ISO small and jam a lot. And this center's gonna go into the ISO small range sometimes.
Eighteen big lines.
Yeah. Okay, you're not supposed to have any min raises in GTO.
No, I didn't say what I mean raise here.
No, no, first in in his position, it's gonna go limp and uh, three X is a good sizing.
Yeah.
When we raise heads up, do we do we ever do we min raise uh, from the button?
Yeah, for sure, but with deeper stacks.
Okay.
So short, it's really, really minus AB because um, they can reach them a lot. But of course, many people don't do that.
Forty big blocks, yeah.
Is this a new blue spot? Yes. Uh, no, no, any two for sure. Maybe fifty percent jam? Oh, yes.
Yeah, but this, this is, this is way in the range, right? So.
Yeah, for sure.
But isn't this more of a limb? No, it's.
If you're deeper, yes, I think, but uh.
With this stack configuration, we're just ripping any two.
One or uh, like.
Maybe the hands we are playing, most of them.
Sixty percent of hands, seventy percent of hands? Yes.
I like I like fans fifty percent more like because I you still have to have some min raises because or limbs.
I think we are maybe jamming forty percent and limping fifty percent, just falling ten percent.
That sounds sound sound.
Oh, collision. Oh, my God.
Last half.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty good job. I know, we have to fade it here, like that's the.
Yeah.
Pretty good turn.
Oh, pretty good river.
Safety touch.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh.
We were not.
Dip it.
Yeah, we need to fade hearts here.
Good call by him, actually. I wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Necessarily expected that.
Is this a call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a king.
Yeah, but all like all kings and aces here are supposed to do that, right?
I think so.
Now the small offsuit kings, I think are folding.
I think the hand before, two hands before I fo- I folded king six, offsuit.
Yeah, all right, man.
That's. He had a little bit more.
Seventy eight, seventy nine thousand yen's and they don't.
What is that, yens?
You are.
You are, yeah.
You want? Yeah, you want? I don't know.
Chinese.
Seven hours, one thousand seven hundred players. Does it give you a border?
What?
Can you?
Like a stamp like APL.
Oh, maybe I have a border now. I don't know.
Can you convert it?
Pretty sure you're gonna have like a an APL logo. I don't know, but.
To digital yuan.
Uh, I I just I just got dollars in my account. It's fine.
That's converted to digital yuan.
Very well done, man. It was uh, pretty cool to uh, to review, man. You did some.
Yeah, I just had the five minutes of craziness and after the rest was okay like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Pretty cool, man. Pretty nice.
You played really good, yeah.
Yeah.
Congrats.
I I felt really good.
Yeah. All right. Thanks a lot for watching, everybody.